This is Rooted in Currituck, a journey back through growing up and in Currituck County, North Carolina, produced by the Currituck County Center of North Carolina Cooperative Extension. I'm Cameron Lowe, the county extension director.
And I'm Adam Formella, the agriculture extension agent here in Currituck.
Very good. And a bit later in our podcast, we're going to hear from Currituck County farmer and county commissioner Owen Etheridge, who's going to talk to us a little bit about what life was like when he was growing up in Currituck and the changes we've seen as a county. But before we do that, I came across a really cool story, a report from 1927, and it was an extension report, a report of work that we were doing here in Currituck County that really also kind of alluded to the major changes that were taking place in our county even then. And so I just want to share just a little bit of that report because it was really kind of cool to me. At that time, Ms. Virginia Edwards was our home demonstration agent here in Currituck. Ms. Virginia Edwards, actually, side note, later became Ms. Virginia Edwards Brumsey, so she married into the Brumsey family. And Paul Robinson, who owns Currituck Barbecue, this was his grandmother.
Oh, wow.
So there you go. Got some connections there. But her responsibilities as home demonstration agent during that time included many of the same types of things that we do today. You know, she was really responsible for helping communities to organize, to affect change, to educate families, to improve their nutrition and their health and well-being. And at that time, we were without an agriculture agent, so she was even responsible for assisting farms and farmers.
That's crazy because at that time, it's like Depression after World War I, between World War II. So it's like a major time for farming, particularly in this county.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. She had a whole lot of hats to wear, and she left quite a legacy. So back in, I think, the first podcast we did, we talked about, like, there was a kind of a negative report from the first report. It was like there's organization work has been ignored because the people are backwards and all that kind of stuff. So there weren't really any community organizations or things like that. And so Ms. Edwards was responsible for organizing specifically the women into community organizations at that time.
And this is like seven years after that?
Yeah.
That report from the first episode.
Yeah, yeah. So even still, there are very few. I think she mentioned in here, there were like three community organizations, and that was it in all of Currituck. She wrote that until October of 1927, extension work fell under the funding and the supervision of the local Board of Education, which is totally different now. But a law was enacted at the end of that year that established a Board of Agriculture for the county, a three-member Board of Agriculture. And if I remember, those three members were Tully Williams, D.W. Bagley, and J.S. Newbern. So that was our three-member agriculture board. And the law dictated that the home demonstration agent would fall under the supervision of this newly established board. But the bad news was that the bill passed without any funding being allocated. And the Board of Education that was previously supervising home demonstration work pulled that funding because they were no longer supervising that. So there was zero money. Bad day for a home demonstration agent here in Currituck. So let me just read a little bit from Ms. Edwards' report. And she says, "But after this bill passed without the appropriation, and the money having been used by the school board for other purposes, the women were quite discouraged and rather indignant at first when they found it out." So that's kind of fun. "They felt it was no use to go to school authorities, and we knew the commissioners had no money, yet we decided to go before them. I did not have much of an idea that they could get anything, but I did want to see the women make a fight for the work, and the new county law prohibited their borrowing. So I went to the president of the new agricultural board and talked over the situation. He was very sympathetic, but felt things were rather hopeless. The board had not even really organized. However, we persuaded them that there was something that they could do without money." She goes on to say, "I believe it was our emergency which sent them to work. The president of our Federation of Women asked the board to go before the commissioners and ask the appropriation be given them for our work." So with 15 women and girls, the new board and its supporters went before the commissioners. She goes on to say that there were several people lined up to give speeches and things like that. And then she had all these women lined up to give these speeches, but the men did such a good job that the speeches were not needed. They promised money if we could possibly, if they could possibly procure it. And then it's funny, she said, "The women gave three rousing cheers and proceeded to serve a fine dinner to both boards." And she thought it was, she thought it was pretty fun. So she said she was surprised and delighted. And she said, "Most of, most all of the," and you'll hear about this from Mr. Etheridge here in just a minute, "but most all of the progressive measures in this county have been through outside funds given by a wealthy sportsman. And this was the first time the people had voluntarily assumed the responsibility for anything which had been dropped. They were willing to be taxed to support a project, and it showed the appreciation of the people in a splendid way." And then it's kind of funny, you know, given our political climate these days. She said, "Much credit was due to Mrs. Taylor and her women for the way they handled the campaign. And although there was much feeling, the committee tried to silence it and showed them how to put through a measure in a dignified way." Which I thought was, was kind of neat also. Here's another interesting fact. So if you've ever walked into the courtroom in the old historic courthouse, you know where I'm talking about, upstairs where the commissioners meet? So there's an office off to the back-left corner, if you're looking at the Board of Commissioners. And here's where it came from. She says, "They also came to our rescue in regard to my office. There was no place for one in the courthouse, but they met with the commissioners and decided to partition off part of the courtroom. This will be my office, shared by the agriculture board, and also include a restroom for women."
Wow, that's great.
So she got a whole office built up there that's still up there today. And then she ends this section of her report, "Both the Board of Agriculture and county commissioners work in perfect harmony with us." So it was obvious even then in 1927 that extension had a great relationship with our county Board of Commissioners and other agricultural organizations. And, and so that just seemed to me a pretty good segue and a fitting introduction into the guests that we have for the podcast today. And that's Currituck Commissioner Owen Etheridge, again, also a Currituck farmer. And he was interviewed during the Currituck Farm Festival by our advisory board member and my daughter Ashton Lowe.
Great.
So here's Owen's interview.
I am Ashton Lowe, and I am doing this podcast. It's called Rooted in Currituck, and we're getting some stories from people who've been here a little while. So if you want to introduce yourself, we can go ahead and get started.
Yes, my name's Owen Etheridge. Grew up in Shawlboro, a family farm, and decided after going different places, there was no place like home. Always was under the belief that this was the best place for me to be. So I've been here all my life.
So what was it like when you first moved here, and what's kind of the difference? What's changed a bunch?
Well, I look at Shawlboro and the farm community, it's still pretty much a farm community, though it's starting to see some development. But I remember as boys, we rode bicycles about anywhere we wanted to go. We played baseball in our pasture. We didn't need a fancy field like we have now. We had to dodge the cow pies sometimes, but we had a good time. And, you know, the parents didn't worry about us being on bicycles out on the highway because there was traffic, but people seemed to be a little more observant and courteous. And we, as guys on the bicycles, paid a little bit stricter attention to things. And we just didn't throw caution to the wind.
So what are some of your favorite memories about growing up around here?
Well, like I say, we could play baseball anywhere. We didn't have to have a field, per se. Everybody looked out for one another. I got spanked by friends' parents if I misbehaved at their house, you know. Everybody's parent had permission to spank the one misbehaving. They do that today. They go to jail. But, you know, that was, I think that raised discipline in, in all of us. The local barber shop, I think all the boys in Shawlboro had strong necks because we'd sit down in Mr. Harry Gregory's chair, and he didn't take hold of the chair to turn the chair when he was cutting your hair. He clamped his hand on top of your head and turned the chair with your head. So, you know, and I told somebody yesterday, I was talking about that, that if there was a checkered game going on in the barber shop, and he didn't have anybody much in line, it could take you two hours to get a haircut because he'd stop, go over there and watch the checkered game and try to mentor somebody playing checkers. And it's memories like that that don't exist today. I regret that my children and grandchildren cannot experience to that level the things that I experienced.
Yeah, growing up around here, especially for me, my whole family's from here as well, it's nice hearing those stories as somebody who didn't grow up in that time. It is really nice still being able to hear about it. It's really interesting. Speaking about the barber shop, my grandpa's mentioned that the one he went to had one haircut that he gave for everybody. Was it similar at yours? So did everybody your age have the same haircut?
Pretty much. And I bet that was Mr. Sam Wilkins' barber shop.
Over in Cornjack, close to Cornjack.
Well, Marvin Fulcher was one. And Mr. Sam had a barber shop between Cornjack and Barco, and it was a dollar haircut.
So is there any specific, like very specific memory that you wish you could experience again, or have somebody like your grandparents experienced themselves?
Well, something brought back to me about three weeks ago, a guy on Facebook sent me a copy of a picture that was made of the youth group sitting in front of Providence Baptist Church, the old sanctuary. And he said, "For the life of me, I can't remember who that is in this position. Do you know who it is?" Yeah, I had the picture, and I knew who it was. And we talked back and forth for about an hour about youth choir, vacation Bible school, the, the people in the group, and how we all got along. And that's a memory that, you know, you like to relive. And I thanked him for jogging my memory and bringing it back.
And you are one of our commissioners, so how has that kind of affected how you see Currituck?
Well, I've been a commissioner off and on since 1994, so I've seen a lot of growth. Prior to that, starting in 83, I was on the planning board until I got elected. And as a farmer, I had a pesticide license. I was a custom applicator. And it does hurt me to see land that I sprayed 35 years ago now in asphalt and houses, because that's never coming back. And, but Currituck is changing. And I've, I've used this analogy, developers is like water. They find a path of least resistance. And as regulations and whatnot have tightened up in the Hampton Roads area, they're looking to come elsewhere. And we, I said we needed to develop as stringent of regulations as we could and be fair and reasonable to try to control growth. I'm not one that believes that we absolutely can say no because we can't. North Carolina state law prohibits counties from stopping development. You can control it to some degree and manage it, but since I was first elected over that period of time, the state of North Carolina, the General Assembly has removed so many different authorities that a county had for development, and it's the one-size-fits-all mentality. And, you know, we've got an issue in the budget right now that was, they came together this week on the General Assembly, that basically we call, we require the developer to model for a six-inch rainfall in terms of retention ponds and drainage issues. There's a bill, and that budget bill, it says you only can require an inch rainfall. A big difference is that one-size-fits-all for all of North Carolina. There was a bill that luckily never got anywhere this time. Who knows what it might do in two or three years, that said, "If you have a regulation in your ordinance that says you allow one house per acre, we're going to cut that and say that you can have to allow up to four houses per acre." So it's just taking away the local authority and centralizing that authority in Raleigh, much like we see the federal government trying to centralize everything in Washington.
Final question I really want to ask is, how would you say, what would you say to younger people to help continue those memories of Currituck?
Well, the easiest thing would be be satisfied with what we got. But that's not human nature. We always want better. And, you know, we have a, I think, if you look at our school system, we have a good school system. We're still pretty much a rural county. We're not a, a city or urban-style county yet. Moayok is approaching that, I guess. But, you know, we have lost our ability to be self-sufficient in many ways. Like I said, we used to have, we could play baseball in a, in a pasture.
Now we've got these big facilities.
Yeah. Look at our, yeah, look at these facilities. And I'm not saying be totally satisfied with what we got, but let's try to work with what we have to make it better without adding all these different things, because everything you do costs money. And I, I'll be honest with you, I've never had anybody tell me they wanted me to raise their taxes. Some people will say that, but this is a fallacy under North Carolina law, in my opinion. And I'll use agricultural community since I farm. We raise taxes. The person working, living in a home in Moayok commuting to work in Norfolk or Virginia Beach, whatever we raise their taxes by, they can possibly work a little overtime and make that right up. But for these farmers out here, we don't have overtime. We can't demand an increase in commodity prices and fertilizer prices. All inputs are going up, so we've got to deal with what we've got.
It's definitely changed around here from old pictures and stories I've heard, but it was very nice talking to you. Any other thing you want to share?
I just, you know, I'm proud to live in Currituck County. I'm proud to say that I am a county commissioner. I enjoy doing it because I feel like I can really help people. And I appreciate you saying that. And, you know, I, I look around, I was on the Board of Commissioners when we built this facility and built that one, the Public Safety Building. And somebody asked me one time about legacy, what kind of legacy you want to leave. And I never thought much. You hear the national politicians and state politicians talk about the legacy they want to leave behind. And I thought about it for a few moments. I said, "What I would really like is maybe my great-grandchildren or great-great-grandchildren will go in these facilities one day and point out to their children, 'That was your great-great-grandfather, and he did well by the people of Currituck County.'" That's the kind of legacy that, I guess, I would like to leave.
Yeah, and the Etheridge name is kind of popular around here, so I feel like it'll be easy to look back and say you've done something good.
Yeah, Etheridge is, I've been told, the second permanent resident of Currituck was in Etheridge 1645, and his name was Marmaduke Etheridge.
I've been following my lineage back up to like the 1600s, and it's, we've been around for a while.
Yeah. Saw your family, an old name, Etheridge, and Wrights.
Snowden.
Snowden. You know, I guess you could call them the foundation or bedrock of Currituck County. And there's some other names, Bell, Fours. But we've got a rich history, and we need to do more to preserve that history so that future generations can recognize, I won't say the sacrifice, but the contributions that people have made over the years to have Currituck County where it's at today.
Yeah, especially seeing the work that, like personally for, that my, my mom and my grandpa have done for the county is, it's really interesting to see that. And hope that one day, my generation, and me and my sister specifically, can do that, make that kind of impact around here.
One last thing. When my two kids were at, at that time, Nap Junior High School, one called Middle School, I was president of the HSA, not PTA, but I think it was Home School Association. And I wanted to do a contest to talk about different people in Currituck County and set up an essay-type contest where people could do research. The first one thinking about was Mr. Nap, Joseph Nap, who not many people realize the school's name for him, the bridge is named for him, and the contributions he made, not only to Currituck, but to the state of North Carolina. The school of government at UNC Chapel Hill is in a building named the Joseph Nap Building, Nap Sanders Building now, because Mr. Nap believed in what Albert Coates was trying to do with the school of government, and never met the man at the time, and put, put many a dollar in contributing to construction of that building and the curriculum. And Mr. Nap and his wife are buried in Moayok. And very few people realize that. And I think it would be nice if we could recognize Mr. Nap for his contributions. And then there's other people. I know that when we built the Health Department, we named one room for Dr. Rom from Moayok and one room in the Health Department for Dr. Wright from down at Jarvisburg because of the contributions they made to the health and safety of people of Currituck County.
Yeah, it's really interesting seeing the different names that have been stuck around for a couple of years, ever since we began. Oh, it was very nice talking to you. Thank you so much for sharing, and have a wonderful rest of your day.
Thank you for your interest.
I love it. I love hearing these stories. So Adam, Mr. Etheridge talked about some of the changes that we've seen to farming, and he even mentioned that it made him kind of sad to see asphalt and houses where he used to farm. So talk to us a little bit about what agriculture looks like here in Currituck today, and, you know, kind of what we're doing to preserve farmland or protect our environmental assets and those types of things.
Yeah. So, so farming in Currituck today, we have really three main kind of row crops. So we do corn, which is field corn, different than sweet corn that you would get at the grocery store, soybeans, and those are the two summer crops, and then wheat. And those are the three main ones. There's some other vegetables grown here and there, and some other things like millet and some rape seed, which is the same thing as canola oil. But those are the three main ones. Mostly they're used for animal food. And really, it's all large-scale equipment now, a lot of, a lot of land per farming operation just because of all of the costs. So a lot of folks don't realize the cost, but you have to rent the land if you don't own it. And if you have 1,000 acres, most folks don't own 1,000 acres here.
Right.
So you're renting land, so there's a cost there, cost of equipment, all the maintenance, fertilizer costs, seed costs, any kind of pesticide you put down, you have to pay for that too.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of costs added, added into farming. And then a lot of folks don't realize what the farmers basically do at all. They're their own mechanics, they run their own equipment, they're running their business, so they have all the money coming in, getting loans from banks or from whoever they need to get loans for. So it's kind of a challenging position, challenging kind of job to be a farmer.
I would say so. And, you know, they don't really get to set their own prices for the products that they sell either, you know. Do they do, I mean, how does that work?
No, prices are, are gonna vary depending on a number of factors. So other countries are also growing commodities, and that's going to change prices depending on how much wheat is grown in Russia or how many soybeans are grown in Brazil. And then you have other states as well. So the Midwest has a lot of grain. Here in North Carolina, we're feed negative, so we're actually bringing in a lot of grain to feed our livestock. That's what most of the stuff here goes to, but that's going to affect prices as well. So the prices fluctuate. Farmers try to lock in a price before they grow their crop. Sometimes they can store their crop if they have grain bins, and that'll help to kind of ease over some of the, the, the changing prices that you see. But yeah, you're not guaranteed something. It's not like going to McDonald's and every time you expect to get a meal for $5, it's going to change. You never know what you're going to get.
Yeah, absolutely. Not getting that $5 meal at McDonald's much anymore either.
And then you have hurricanes too and stuff like that. All, all the natural disasters, anything like that is going to, going to change your crops. So it's really kind of a guess as to what you might grow depending on the year, depending on
Yeah.
how much everything is going to cost from fertilizer to seed and all that stuff.
That's, that's pretty wild. I know that a few years ago, we had an agricultural development plan done. And as part of that plan, the community was surveyed a lot. And they surveyed farmers and agricultural business operators and things like that. But they also surveyed non-agriculture, just your regular citizens. And they kind of asked them what they felt about agriculture. And I think somewhere around, well, it was 100% of the folks that were surveyed that were non-farm people agreed that agriculture was an important part of Currituck County. And 87% of the folks that were surveyed really valued the, the aesthetic that farms gave Currituck County. You know, they wanted to preserve the open spaces, the farm fields, and things like that, which is really hard to do with all the development pressure that we get here in Currituck County. You know, there's so many people coming down for houses and asphalt, like, like Owen said. You know, so how do we help farmers kind of hang on to their land, or how do we help homeowners protect some of those open spaces and conserve some of those resources?
That's, that's a tough one. It's going to depend. I mean, you know, make sure that you go out there and, you know, you support your farmers any way you can. If, you know, we have all of these meetings, let it be known that you really appreciate farming in the area. If you own land, you know, make sure if you want it farmed, that you reach out and find somebody to farm it. I'm sure there's folks in the area who will want to. And, you know, the green space, I like that you mentioned that, or the open spaces. I was just in a meeting today, and they talked about the importance of crops and sequestering carbon, so taking carbon dioxide from the atmosphere and just how big of a role that plays. So they look great, but they're also potentially good for the environment, taking carbon out.
Functional, yeah.
So yeah, it's, it's, farming is definitely important in the county. You can come to us, and, and we can help you come in contact with a farmer. We have our Currituck Farm Festival where we honored our farmers, showed our appreciation for them. Participating in those events will definitely help as well. If you're interested in kind of the conservation side, so say you're a homeowner, you live in a neighborhood, and you have small little property, there are things that you can do to help preserve some green spaces. So we have a master gardener program here. You can learn about what type of plants to grow that grow well in this area, what type of plants you can grow for pollinators. And we're going to do a pollinator class in a couple of days. A lot of folks maybe don't realize, but habitat loss is the number one reason we're seeing decrease in our native bees. So those are the things, easy things you can do just to kind of help. Maybe you don't have 100 acres or 1,000 acres, or you only have half an acre, but there's certainly something out there that you can do to kind of help add to the, the native and the natural spaces around you.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And then I know that, you know, we're doing a lot of educational efforts here just on how to be responsible with, you know, we teach farmers a lot about how to be responsible with pesticides and, you know, best farming practices and, and conservation practices and those types of things. You know, so, so while they have to do it all, I mean, you said, they're the farmer, they're the mechanic, they're the business manager, they're the marketing manager, you know, all those types of things. We do try to do some farmer education here and get them the help that they need for resource, resources at, at NC State.
Yeah, that's one of the, actually, one of the big points or parts of my job, a lot of folks don't realize, but they come to me with soil samples and stuff like that. But farmers, one of my, my big responsibilities to them is to get them pesticide credits. So it's a type of training they have to do. They have, every three years, they have to get credits so they properly apply pesticides. And during that process, we bring researchers from NC State, take the information they know, and they present to the farmers. So not only are they getting information on how to safely apply pesticides and the changes there, but they're also getting information to make their production a little bit more efficient in a way so they can make a little bit more money, maybe apply less fertilizer, but still get the same kind of yield that they would if they had less. So, and then we have pesticide. And then we have pesticide collections. Like you said, we have containers around the county so they can recycle those containers and things like that. We have pesticide disposal days for farmers where if they have old products that maybe aren't safe anymore, they can get rid of those. And we have the same kind of events for homeowners too. So if you have old pesticides, don't pour them down the drain. If you have old fertilizers, don't throw them in the trash can, bring them to us during these collection days, and we'll help you get rid of them safely.
Yeah, absolutely. I think farmers are probably, a lot of people don't think of it this way, but I think they're pretty big environmentalists too. Because they know if they ruin the land, if they ruin the, the, you know, the natural resources that they have, they, they ruin their livelihood.
Right.
So, you know, a lot of people maybe, maybe don't really understand that, that, that they're just as concerned about the environment and those natural resources as your everyday citizen, if not more so.
Absolutely, yeah. If you, if you're putting salt on the land, nothing's going to grow there, then there goes the money that you make from growing that.
Absolutely.
So yeah, definitely need to take care of the land and the waters around it, and they do a good job of that.
Yes, absolutely. And, you know, we are about 50% land, about 50% water here in Currituck, so it's, it's a big, a big task, a big task. But are there any educational efforts that you've got coming up that might interest folks?
So we do have the, the pollinator class that's, well, I guess it would have been yesterday now, so.
When this podcast releases.
We're recording this on Tuesday, the class is Thursday, and then hopefully this will go out on a Friday. So we do have classes coming up. Usually this winter is when we do a lot of our farming classes. We have some training, so check out our website for that for November, depending on when you're listening to this. In the spring, we're going to have a lot of classes. We'll have our Flower and Garden Show again, the Master Gardeners do. So depending on what time of year or when you're listening to this, be on the lookout, check out our website, our Eventbrite, all of that stuff has information on when you can sign up for classes.
Yeah, very good, very good. And we talked about community organizations, and we have a number of community organizations affiliated with Extension, from 4H to Extension and Community Association to Master Gardeners and, and a number of others as well. So if, if folks are interested in getting involved in any of those types of things, they can certainly contact us and find our information on our, on our website. So we hope that you've enjoyed this episode of Rooted in Currituck. Be sure to subscribe wherever you get your podcasts so that you don't miss an episode. And by golly, if you've got a story to share, make sure you connect with us @currituckces on social media or give us a call at the Currituck Extension Center. Until next time.
See you.